Their need for the facility had pushed and they ended up terminating. And so we found another user. We have an exciting development that we're going to present here. This is a state of the art, advanced, multi-story e-commerce fulfillment center. That maximizes efficiency and operations with a substantially smaller footprint than the nine hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot building we previously hadn't titled. This proposed facility, so it receives inbound bulk items. So say if you have, you know, a producer, they have a lot of items, they come in on a truck and then they get sorted, stored, and then ultimately packaged and shipped. This, this proposed facility will be at twenty-four seven, three sixty-five operation. Everything that takes place onsite will be within the secured facility, not open to the public. This proposed building that we're, we're amending our, our site plan is instead of nine hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet, it is six hundred and fifty-two, so it's substantially smaller. It is multi-story, where each of the four above grounds, so five total stories, would be six hundred, six hundred thousand square feet. And basically these multi-stories, it's, it's not, the majority of it is not occupiable, so meaning people aren't in there. It's mostly sortation, robotic, and conveyors. The, the five stories, so the peak of the, the roof line on this facility is ninety-four feet, five, or six inches. We have submitted to the zoning board for a variance. The, the build, the, the site right now is an existing surface mine. And from I eighty-four, State Road six, the finished floor, the proposed finished floor of this is going to be twenty to thirty feet below those elevations. So even though we're requesting, we're requesting a variance for that height, from the distance, it's set down into the ground, so it doesn't project that height above, you know, say the, the adjacent roadways. So the other thing with the location of the building. We have about a thousand feet located away from State Road six and a thousand feet located from McBride, so. And we, we prepared a lot of photo simulations, we can see exactly what this would look like based on the topography and actual photographs that were taken around the site. Getting into the project benefits, so this is going to be an investment within the town in the magnitude of hundreds of millions of dollars. And it's going to significantly increase the taxable value of this property. We're going to create at least seven hundred and fifty permanent full-time jobs with comprehensive benefits, educational opportunities, plus hundreds of part-time and seasonal jobs. This is going to create at least three hundred construction jobs in order to construct this facility. There's over a million dollars in building permit fees to the town. We're going to spend approximately fifteen million dollars improving DOT roadways, so State Road six, seventeen M, as well as extend water sewer to the site that will then be dedicated to the town. And it's a redevelopment of an active mine, so currently there's a hundred and fifty line-hole trucks that exit and enter the site, so three hundred trips from trucks. You know, they're very heavy, dirty, you know, the noise, the, the air quality associated with a mine. And this facility is also going to implement sustainable design, so the roof will be built so that it's solar-ready, so that it, it can handle the, the loads of solar in the future, depending upon the utility and if they're able to take excess solar. There's going to be EV infrastructure, so right now electric trucks don't exist, but what we're going to do is put underground conduits so that in the future, whenever EV trucks are a thing, that we can easily then implement electronic vehicle charging stations. This facility's not, it's going to eliminate onsite gas combustion, so the heating is going to be all electric, so there's going to be no natural gas. And the building will have LED lighting and controls and, and efficiency systems, so that it'll be as efficient as possible. So, this, we're giving a, a high-level overview, we're still working through all of our, our SECR, you know, traffic studies, noise studies, all of that, and that will be part of our next submittal. And the, the purpose of this is to request lead agency and get that process started. And then take any questions, obviously, that the board may have.
Okay, thank you. A couple of things, can you brief us, just as you know, I went to that presentation, one of our board members went actually, then went up to visit the, the similar facility upstate. The, the, can you explain a little bit about the, I guess it's the truck and the product, how it comes in and out?
So it, it would come in via line-hole truck, it's kind of spread out over a twenty-four hour period.
So what kind of truck?
Line-hole, I mean, just, you know, tractor-trailer. So products would come in, you know, in, in bulk, so let's, let's say, for example, say it's like razor blades or something, and it comes in on a truck full of those, and as they get into the facility, it's sorted, and then it is stored. As somebody purchases the product, now it gets routed out to a, a truck that would be with other products that would go to a, a last mile or a middle mile facility. So there are no deliveries, nobody, nothing from this, this site would end up going to, you know, a purchaser's home. So it's all from this facility being sorted and then shipped to another facility.
Now, was this, because tractor-trailers and what, was this one, we send smaller vehicles out?
No.
Tractor-trailers out too?
The, the tractor-trailers, they, they come in with bulk items, and then as it's sorted and packaged, then another outbound truck would then leave and, and take that to another facility where ultimately we, we delivered to like a last mile facility.
The outbound trucks, what size are they compared to the tractor-trailers?
The, the same size.
Same size?
I'm, I thought, I must confuse it with, with a product. Was there anything, because I read, because this is significantly bigger, three, what, three, three point, uh, three point two million square feet.
Right, so the overall footprint is smaller, but for efficiencies of how these systems operate, it's multi-story. So you're, you're getting a smaller impact from a footprint standpoint, and then the associated parking, so. And, and most of that space, so call it only thirty percent of that space is occupiable, meaning where people would actually be located?
Was there anything that, perhaps I missed, I, I see you've got just about fifteen hundred parking spots for cars and trailers. Is there anything about trucks, any of that information?
Yeah, so, so we are, we, we will have our traffic study prepared for our next submittal. The, the way that with the shift changes, so, so kind of trucks are a twenty-four hour item, where, you know, you might have six, eight trucks an hour. And then the main thing are going to be the employees with shift changes. So we will be able to meet our previous entitlement as far as peak hour, because the shift change of this facility is at seven AM, where the peak of the network is seven thirty to eight thirty. So during that peak, we're going to be well under what we were entitled, same thing for the, the PM. So the PM of this network on State Road six and seventeen M is four thirty to five thirty, the shift change is at six thirty, so it's outside of the peak. So, you know, when, when they have the heavy traffic is when the network itself is off-peak.
This still a, a shift change, and didn't you say seven, approximately seven hundred and fifty places?
Correct.
So the shift change should be approximately seven hundred and fifty.
Right, and, and our traffic study will be more worst-case, where we have seasonal employees and, and, you know, for more of a peak type demand?
What's the estimate, or time help when you need extra people?
Uh, hundreds.
I just find it strange to, to find why there's nine hundred car parking lots, their numbers don't justify anywhere near that.
Well, it, it, their, their parking is kind of like, think about it as like a shopping mall. You know, shopping mall, they tried to kind of plan for the peak season when everybody's there, but most of the time you go to a shopping mall, you know, the, the spots on the exterior are always empty. So that's kind of the thought process, that they don't want, you know, they get the peak season, all of a sudden there's not enough spaces for people to park. That's kind of the idea behind it.
But still with that, I mean, it just seems like a, a, a significant amount more traffic going to be produced from this facility than from the other one, especially with, it's, that many employees leaving.
So one deviation on this compared to the other, so when we did the nine hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot facility, we used ITD data, and that's the, the basis of the peak demand. Because this facility is so specialized, we can't, we, they, they have user-generated that, they, they know exactly when shift changes are going to be and when trucks are going to come in. And this facility has been permitted by DOT elsewhere, and so, and instead of using an ITD, we will use a user-generated. So that's kind of the, the deviation between those peak hours of the previous and what it is worth proposing.
I don't know if that really addressed anything I said, but, it's just, the, the numbers are just a little bit more, that's, that's, that's makes sense. And just a fair warning, which I might as well bring you up to speed on this, I'm sure you've heard. But we've always, I think we'll talk forever about this, so a couple of years ago, we got the approvals. I'm not sure if it was an anomaly or what, but we had virtually no public comment on anything, which sounded all of us. Since then, just recently, we've had three public hearings on a facility ten percent the size, and we listened to over ten hours of negative public comment and reams of paper associated with the Republican, all their concerns about traffic, noise, and pollution, and every other thing, so just a fair warning on, on all of that. Things have changed in a couple of years. But, any, has there been any, any talk about possibly, any connection with Route eighty-four?
DOT has not brought up any, any items, so going back to the improvements, so as, as part of our, our previous entitlement, what we're required to do is put a traffic signal at our entrance and then put turn lanes. Over at County Road fifty-six and State Road six, install a traffic signal. And then up at the intersection of State, State Road six and seventeen M, install dual left turn lanes, so from State Road six, left bound going north on seventeen M, as well as seventeen M northbound, turning west on the State Road six, we will be expanding that. As well as right now, the off-ramp of I eighty-four westbound to northbound seventeen M, right now it's a stop sign, it doesn't function as is. So we're going to end up widening that to two lanes and installing a traffic signal. And, you know, again, based on our, our traffic studies and all, you know, the millions of dollars we're going to spend on mitigations, our, our traffic studies will show that it is going to improve existing operations. And, and be able to handle, you know, the, the traffic that we're proposing.
Did I understand you where you said seven o'clock in the morning is the first shift?
Correct.
Because two eighty-four and Route six, at that particular time, because of school bus, teachers, and everything else, it was a real mess there already. Now you've got a hundred and seventy-five people, some of them, a lot of them are coming from that direction.
Seven hundred and fifty.
Seven hundred and fifty.
Right, so with, with the DOT roadways, we've been through permitting with them, they've reviewed all of the studies. Again, what, what they're showing is the, the peak of this network is seven thirty to eight thirty, when the maximum volume of background traffic. So again, we'll, we'll have to go through DOT, we'll have to, you know, have them, you know, peer review all of our studies, and ultimately they would have to approve and agree that everything we're doing is not going to be detrimental.
Are you going to take the shift, you say you're open twenty-four hours a day, yet you have ten-hour shifts, I don't comprehend how ten-hour shifts will cover twenty-four hours.
There, there's staggering in the shift, so it's not necessarily everybody leaves at seven AM, there, there's a staggering to it. So, oh, that will be part of our submittals, and that will be laid out in detail.
Was there a total, uh, truck trip count?
There, there won't be, that, that'll, that'll come with our, our traffic study.
At this point, we're just looking for designation for lead agency and need referral to, to the ZBA?
We, we've already, we've already submitted the ZBA.
It was not, I, I was there at that meeting of the ZBA, you went August fifteenth, there was no ruling, right?
Right.
I think the chair has to be on a public hearing, and basically just opted to come back here to the planning board. So they have not made a decision on the height variance yet.
Correct.
I have the board vote on the referral, just to make it safe.
Okay, and with that.
I also have a question, John, as far as amended site plan, is this an amended site plan with drastic changes that we're seeing now? I was, like, I looked at, the thing they kept seeing was like ten percent change, and I don't know how this is.
It's still under conditional final, so there is no actual final approval based on the conditions not being met. So it's basically a revision to the plan for the existing site.
Now, where are we as far as, any additional, uh, secret work that would have to be associated with this, I'm sure Pat or David or?
Just as far as I'm concerned, it would have to be basically start all of this.
Okay, so first up to the, the ZBA would just be for a height variance?
Correct.
So yeah, you should, you, we should probably address lead agency before we do a, a referral to the ZBA, I'll defer to David on that, but.
No, I agree.
So I, just before you do that, we have numerous comments on the EAF that was submitted.
Hardly.
So, you want me to go through all my comments, or the EAF specifically? So I, I have the same question that Ms. Parsons just asked, is it an amended site plan based on a three million, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty square foot building? David just addressed that. The height of the structure was just mentioned at ninety-four point six feet, the EAF identifies the structure at a hundred and three point five, so that'll need to be cleaned up. The cover letter identifies that traffic improvements will be undertaken consistent with planning board's secret negative declaration. Revised traffic studies will be required during any secret review. The documents identify the amended project will require the construction of an electrical substation. The electrical substation is being identified as being owned by Orange and Rockland Utilities. Any secret review must also evaluate the impacts associated with the electrical substation. The proj, just noted the project involves a point seven eight acre parcel of property, a lot consolidation. There's a, there's that three-quarter plus or minus acre parcel of property between the railroad tracks and, and, and the adjoining properties that will be transferred to this parcel. Warehouse distribution facilities are a special use in the zoning district. Planning board review is subject to zoning section one ninety-five, seventy-six special use criteria. I know I've mentioned that in numerous comments. The project will require zoning board of appeals approval for building height. I'm not sure if it needs approvals for parking, we have to get a handle on that parking count versus what is required. We just identified numerous outside agencies that are required. The project is a type-one action, disturbing greater than ten acres, a structure greater than a hundred thousand square feet, parking over five hundred vehicles in a town having a population less than one hundred and fifty thousand persons or less. The property is located in an agricultural district, so any type-one action threshold exceeding twenty-five percent of a type-one action threshold triggers the type-one action. The EAF identifies threatened or endangered species, proximity to the critical environmental area, the rich preservation zone, and potential impacts to cultural and archaeological resources. The EAF identifies, should identify the Wayway on the ambulance service, that has recently been placed in service. The zoning districts should be depicted on the map. The site is an active mine regulated by New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. A mine land reclamation permit closeout will be required. The EAF identifies wetland disturbance proposed, and the document states exact of what, exact amount of wetland disturbance to be determined. That should be identified in the EAF, not to be determined. The EAF identifies point zero four eight acres of aquatic vegetation to be removed. I'm not sure if that's a reference to the wetlands, or if there is some other aquatic vegetation, I think that should be clarified. The aquatic vegetation, in my mind, would be submerged aquatic vegetation, not necessarily just the wetlands. The application states that a pre-construction notification had previously been submitted. The notification may require to be revised based on the new project. Just noted for the planning board, the EAF identifies the project as having a forty-five thousand gallon per day anticipated water demand. The status of any.
Hey, can I step in, I know I meant to ask that, you were still proposing to connect to wetlands, water, sewer, one on this?
Correct.
Do we have that much water available yet?
We do, it's like twenty thousand gallons, and if you, it's interesting that the car wash uses seventy-five thousand gallons, so this would not even be as much as the car wash uses.
Well, it's, it's a cumulative, it's a, it's a, we have a lot of other things in that.
My understanding, we, we do, I asked to use that question, so.
Pat, what's the substation, is it just a storage area, or is it creating electricity?
I, I believe it's a, a, a utility scale, uh, substation to provide power to the facility. I don't have the details of that, it's identified in the EAF.
So they'd have to make power, I mean?
I don't think they make it, I think it's.
They just store the power being sent to them?
Yeah, it, it's one of the, it's, it's going to be one of those utility-scale, large substations that'll distribute power to the facility, because probably a fairly large power demand here, that they have to build a new electrical substation.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so it's a, it's, it's a power plant, a substation.
Just long as they don't burn gas to make electricity, that's all I was worried about.
The status of approval of any outside user, water, or sewer district. The EAF identifies the new water supply district or service area is not proposed, that should be further clarified. The proposed action is identified as generating, generating forty-five thousand plus or minus gallons a day of sanitary wastewater. Calculations supporting sewer use should be provided. The ability for the town of Wayway on to provide water and sanitary sewer to the site should be further addressed. The EAF identifies that existing wastewater treatment, identifies existing wastewater treatment plant has capacity to serve the project. An analysis of existing flows and demand in the water and sewer district one should be provided. Flow commitments to other projects under review by the town should be addressed in the analysis to determine capacity. The intermunicipal agreement between Wayway on to and City of Middletown exists regarding water and sewer capacity. The land use cover types in the EAF should be evaluated, they don't quite add up. The EAF identifies eighty-five point seven acres of metal and grassland. It's noted that a majority of the site is currently an active mine. Information pertaining to whether the facility's servicing children, the elderly, people with disabilities, i.e. schools, hospitals, licensed daycare, group homes within fifteen hundred feet of the project, the answer is no. The applicant is requested to confirm and identify the source of that answer. The project identifies the average depth of bedrock currently at greater than five feet. Currently, there is active bedrock mining occurring on the site, so that answer needs to be addressed. The predominant soil types are identified from the soil survey, mining activity has significantly altered the soil types there. Further evaluation of the soil types should be undertaken and addressed in the EAF. The EAF, section E two F, has answers as to the percent slopes that are covered with plus or minus symbols. I think it's something with the formatting of the EAF. The classification of the stream months of tributary to the Caitlin Creek on the site should be identified in the EAF. Page twelve, capital letter M, complete, the, complete the description of the predominant wildlife species. Currently, the answer says typical suburban wildlife, that should be further expanded. Page twelve, E three B, the answer should be completed in the EAF. The question is regarding acreage of highly productive soils on the site, and the answer provided is Orange County Agricultural District number one. Additional information regarding the location of the ridge preservation, critical environmental area should be identified. The project sites identifying on potential historic and archaeological resources. The top of page thirteen should provide a brief description of those attributes. Based on, on how that answer was filled out, there's a section missing there. Just as for the board's attention, the application includes a comparison to the Slateville Commerce Center versus the proposed project Bluebird. The following items are identified as an increase. Lot frontage proposed for the project is sixty-nine point five feet closer to McBride Road. The proposed project requires four hundred and eighty-four more passenger vehicle parking spots. The proposed project requires one hundred and forty-four more truck parking. The proposed project is one, or forty-one feet higher. Lot surface coverage is increased by three point one percent. The site it joins residentially drone parcels along the western property line. The proposed project identifies seventeen point eight of additional land disturbance. And the proposed project identifies thirty-five thousand gallons additional water and sewer demand. The agricultural data statement in the package should be filled out completely. The loading and off-street parking requirements chart utilizes the building footprint to park, for the parking calculations. We're suggesting the town's traffic consultant's comments on required parking for the entire structure should be addressed. Information pertaining to the one hundred and eighty total parking spaces provided should be identified and provided to the planning board to determine parking requirements. And then just a note on the plans, that the plan identifies decommissioned railroad tracks along the eastern property line. And it's unclear if these railroad tracks are truly decommissioned, in recent years there has been train cars parked out there. So I think there needs to be updated, updates to the EAF consistent with those comments.
All right, so, make motion for lead agency this morning?
It, it, it would have to be subject to those changes to the EAF, I don't know if the board wants to see the EAF again.
No, we, we need it, but you want it subject to.
Well, talk to the board, if you want to see the EAF first revised, or if you want it revised.
Obviously, we, we have to see all of it, but I don't know that.
So we can't do it, you're saying?
Yeah, I'm suggesting the EAF needs to be revised to address those comments.
Do you think they're okay?
I agree.
Paul Van Cot, when I asked him, Hannah, would it be possible for us to, because we, we're in the process of updating the EAF, to submit that and to your engineer and to his satisfaction to address those comments?
Well, it's, um, it means to say there's a significant amount that has to, uh, take, take place in this project, uh, to move it down. Well, how's it work, I know we all need to see all of this.
This is a lot of work.
They're going to have to update the EAF.
Yeah, there's no doubt they have to, but I, I think he's asking if this, this project. I think we're all pretty much agreed on that. Would this hinder from getting to the ZBA?
You could still do it.
So once you declare lead agency, the ZBA is going to have to wait until a secret determination is made for them to make a determination.
I would a legal clarify.
If I may, so, really what you're, what you're doing by declaring notice of lead agency is just getting notice out there that you're seeking to have lead agency status. And recirculating to the agencies who've already been notified. The, we can provide the updates, and your town engineer can sign off on them before the circulation occurs. But that won't preclude the planning board from requesting additional information to provide, make sure that the part one of the EAF is fully to your satisfaction. This just gets the process started.
Well, what about if the ZBA doesn't prove it?
Well, the ZBA can't approve the height variance until your board as lead agency makes a full secret determination. So that, that will be, you know, down the line after we make a, a submission. This is really more procedural formality, and it's kind of a evolving process where we're going to be providing more information to your board and to any other involved or interested agency that wants that information.
If you have a project conditional approval, this is way different than the conditional approval you have for the project that you have now.
And, and the EAF reflects those changes. The, as part of the circulation that is sent to the other agencies, we would be providing essentially the same information that has been provided to the planning board, and that will go out to all the agencies, so they'll have a copy of the. and that will go out to all the agencies, so they'll have a copy of the concept plan that you all have been provided. Uh, the cover letter, uh, that described, and the project narrative that describes the project. Um, so that will basically just flag for those agencies the fact that there is an amended project that, that has been proposed. Uh, it will also address the fact that it is, even though it's smaller footprint, much larger in terms of.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm trying to, this would be an amended site plan, this is going to be a whole new project.
If I can, I, I think what, please correct me if I'm wrong, but, in order to circulate this to other potential agencies, I think Pat would like more updated information that reflects what, more complete information, if you'd say.
Yeah, we need an accurate EAF.
Yeah, and so ultimately, it's up to the board if they want to require that first, before they, they circulate. Um, so it's, it's ultimately your determination.
Oh, yeah, we got it, yeah.
Yes, I.
I agree. Is it possible that you can have the EAF form updated in time for a November thirteenth meeting?
Yes.
Absolutely.
All right, we'll take a look at it then.
And we'll take a look at it then, and then we can take a little more.
Can you take a picture on it, on a stage, or?
No.
Okay. Uh, and ju- just, just to say this out loud too, I, I don't know, uh, so, so are we considering this a new application?
We're considering it as an, as an amended site plan, but we are starting the environmental process all over here.
And how would that dovetail with the, I mean, the regulations that are, are from the town board?
They, if, if regulations were put in place prior to the amended site plan being filed, then they would have to follow those updated regulations.
Have they, and, I, I don't know, it's still con- conditional, I'm not even sure that.
Yeah, they're still under conditional for the current approval. Um, but with filing the amended site plan, they're, they're basically opening that back actually.
You, Pat, you said file, but where? And there, there was an awful lot to this, there were a lot of considerations, so it was, this was a very complex project. Somebody ensure the status is full of, full of.
At, well, they have conditional final, they have the approval from the board, there's conditions that are still waiting to be completed in order for them to get their final approval. It makes, that makes it an amended site plan, because essentially, they're, they're having you reevaluate the approval based upon the updates they've made to the plan for the site. So those significant changes to what the plan actually is, is what's triggering a new secret review. So, um, if, in my opinion, um, if any additional regulations that would affect this project were, um, passed by the town board prior to the filing of the amended site plan application, those would now be applicable to this review.
But, but has it been filed?
Has what been filed?
The amended site plan, right, because it has to be approved and filed.
Right.
No, this is a formal application.
Yeah, this is from a formal application, so their amended site plan application has been filed with the town.
They are filing this August twenty-eighth.
Maybe I misunderstood something, but is this building going to be closer to McBride Road now?
It, it's going to be a thousand feet, uh, over a thousand feet away from, from, from State Road Six and McBride Road.
Thank you. So, uh, so it's filed August twenty-eighth, is that, what, this year, or?
Yeah.
So, so now we're back to the, um, procedural, so we need, all this information we need, uh, should, should, from one of the information person?
Yeah, I agree.
That's a consensus, so I think that's a consensus.
And you think you can have it by the next meeting?
Yes. Yeah, we'll, we'll have it, uh, within two weeks in order to make this a middle, to, to November thirteenth.
And we have to check our schedule, we've been, uh, bombarded, uh, these meetings, so we, I, I don't really want to promise you that November thirteenth, I think we have some public hearings.
We have two public meetings on that, and we have Gateway Farm, and we have, I believe, we're going to motion here this evening for a CDO public hearing, and those will be only two items on the November thirteenth agenda at this moment.
Okay, we'll have to get back to one, uh, uh, it's either in October, so, okay. So, okay, so here's my, uh, if you back this, we'll, we'll move forward.